Welcome to the afternoon part of the MURG special session of the Traffic Forecast 2021 Competitions of the Institute of Advanced Research and Artificial Intelligence. I'm David Kain, under the honor of being the host for this part of the session and chairing the session that will be kicked off by an exciting keynote by Monika Sester of the Institute of Cartography and Geoinformatics at the University of Hannover. We then follow this by an exciting packed program, first introducing the winners from the first prize corps and second extended prizes by Li Chao Lu, a model learning for transport traffic forecasting via multitask learning. This is then followed by a work on graph-based unit models by Hermes and Anadi Pu Dizal talking about architecture for deep traffic prediction using shifted window transformers. After that, we'll have a presentation on boom encoding of units for spatial temples or main shift frame prediction by Gaisen Toki. And this is then followed by a summary outlook and discussion that is led by Moritz Neuner, Christian Eisenberger of our institute. And I would like to encourage you to actively take part in the discussion. It will be open, it will be an open forum for everyone. Similarly, I would very much like to encourage you, if you have any questions at all during the session, to type them in the chat. They will then be taken up or will be part for each talk. So with this, I'm really delighted to introduce the keynote for the session by Monika Sester. She's a leading researcher in remote sensing and telemetry. She has been the vice president of Leibniz University Hannover and is now a chair of the Senate Commission of the EFG of Earth System Science and is a member of the Senate of the Helmholtz Association. She published well over 100 papers in top journals and we're very much looking forward to her presentation of automatic analysis of mobility data that is so close to the core topic of this conference. Monika, I'm delighted to have you here and I really look forward to your presentation stages yours.
Thank you very much for this kind introduction, David. Thank you very much for having me here. I was very much pleased when I got the invitation to give this keynote and I decided to describe several approaches or methods or applications what we are doing at our institute in Hannover related to the interpretation and analysis of mobility data. So you will see now a kind of potpourri of different applications and you will also see what kind of data we are using and also what kind of methods we are applying. So I think we are all aware that there are a lot of spatial processes and also related spatial data around. So if you look at crowds moving through a public space or also animals moving, they are producing spacetime trajectories, also soccer players, they do the same. And it is interesting to look at the underlying processes behind these movements. And for that, today we do have a lot of, I just try to get my screen a little bit more tidy up. Okay, we have a lot of spatial temporal data available with upcoming new sensors that are available today. And so we have trajectories, we do have images that encompass movement, we have videos, we also have lidar data, we have volunteer geographic information that can be exploited. And all this data, we have different resolutions quality, also they have some attributes that they are coding that could be exploited. So we are, they are reflecting the dynamics of the object, but also the dynamics of the environment. And that is what we are interested in. So we want to get more knowledge about the dynamics of the environment and why it is so dynamic. And also we are interested in looking at the behavior of moving objects and probably also find out why they behave in this way. And for that, we have a lot of applications like autonomous driving, but also traffic or city planning, but also disaster mitigation, early warning. Okay, so let's look at the applications that we are working on or have been working on our institute. They roughly group them into infrastructure-related dynamics, traffic-related dynamics and also then sexual discuss highly dynamic phenomena. Okay, so the first topic I'm dealing with is how to detect changes in the environment. And this is Julia Schachschneider, PhD student in our EFG research training group, who is supervised by my colleague Klaus Brenner. So the idea is that we want to know more about our environment. It's not, not sufficient anymore to only have static maps, but they should also code somehow the dynamics of the environment in order to also let autonomous system behave similar to what, to how we are doing because we do have kind of expectation of how the environment looks like at different time instances. So for instance, we do know how a street scene looks at day and nighttime, we know how it looks in summer or winter. We also have an expectation that if we pass by a school, what could happen around this school? So it's not only the school building, but there are also people around and that might differ in the morning, afternoon or evening. Okay, so the idea is that if we have, if we can grasp the dynamics of the environment over time, then we can code it in dynamic maps and this would help the autonomous systems to better understand their environment and react faster. Okay, how do we capture the dynamics of the environment? We have a mobile mapping system which you see here on top of a van. It is composed of two lidar scanners and cameras and very high precision GPS IMU. And we get such three-dimensional point clouds, very high resolution. And we can of course analyze and segment this data and if we just produce or segment the raw, the raw point clouds as we come from the scanner, we get these nicely deformed patterns, these scan strips. This is due to the geometry of a lidar sensor. And Klaus devised segmentation algorithm that works on the scan strips because then it can be better analyzed than working on the three-dimensional data. But of course, all these points have a 3D coordinate and can easily be transformed back. But these pictures, they look quite nice and they are also some kind of artistic looks. So like the cars, they look very like a kids' cars. Okay, but as I said, the data can be transformed to 3D and then we have segmentation which helps us to identify the different parts of buildings, but also the different objects. Okay, so what can we do with that data in order to find out what are dynamics? Of course, if we only drive once, we hardly can capture dynamics. So we have to drive several times. And in order to find out the dynamics, then the different measurement campaigns have to be perfectly aligned. And this is what is done by a global strip adjustment. So here is a test area if we just pass by with our van, when we can capture the roads, but also the environment of the roads. And it looks like that. So these are two scan strips, we see a white one and a red one. And we see that it's fits quite nicely, but we also see that when we come closer, there are some discrepancies here. And if we look at the projection, we also see that there are here these discrepancies that come from the accuracy, how we can acquire the data. I said that the measurement system is a very high-quality GPS IMU system which delivers an accuracy of 20 cm. So we get a positional accuracy of 20 cm, which is quite high, but the accuracy of the lidar is even higher. And if we then overlay the data, then we have this small displacements. So therefore, the displacement are in the area of 20 cm and of course they show up in the data. So we want to get rid of them. And Klaus devised a global adjustment, which is based on alternating least squares, where we on the one hand try to adjust, to calculate surfaces of 3D point clouds. And from that, on the other hand, the trajectory can be kind of modified in order to better fit the points on the surface. And this is done in alternating way and leading to a huge adjustment system, but which is only sparsely occupied, where we have a lot of surface points and a few trajectory anchors. And Klaus managed to, to also realize that in a parallel system, in a Hadoop system to get it really scalable. Okay, after applying that, we see that the final differences in the point clouds are in the range of one or two centimeters. And here is again the example I showed before. Now after the adjustment, we have a kind of overlay of the red and the white one. And this is also how we see the, after the adjustment, the data fits better. And accumulating a lot of data over time gives us very, very high and dense, highly precise and also dense point clouds. So we see a lot of objects in the scene, the three-dimensional structure of the buildings that can be used for different purposes. Okay, but coming back to the dynamic maps, so Julia did data capture. So she organized bi-weekly measurement runs over one, one year that yielded 25 measurement runs. And she also did it over different times of the day, so to get a representative, representative data capture. And here we see this are some visualizations where we can see that obviously it reflects different seasons, weather conditions, but also traffic conditions. And the data, if it's just overlaid, we see that in this case, each measurement run is coded with a different color. So we see that where we have a mix of all the colors, we have the static objects and where we only have one color, like here this green car, this is the car that stood there when the green measurement run was, was taken. Okay, and in order to analyze the changes, she is using a ray tracing approach. And the underlying idea is that by voxelizing the whole scenario, it can be analyzed where the laser beam hit an object. So then this rustle cell is coded with a point with an increment. And here we see of course, the building was hit, but here the car was hit. And the point that is on the building, which is hidden or occluded by the car is not hit. But then the, in the second measurement run, then the car is gone. That point is hit now on the surface, but the voxel that was kind of coded by the car is now passed through. And these hits and misses can then be coded and looked at. And we see here that of course, the static objects, they have a lot of hits because we are seen from a lot of measurement runs and objects that are dynamic or here that are often occluded, they have a lesser amount of hits. And this can then be exploited to segregate and separate dynamic objects from static objects. So here in color coded, we see the dynamics one, the ones with less hits than the others. And we see of course, the static environment, also the trees, they are partially static, but also some dynamics, namely the foliage and the growth that occurs during the year. And this can then be removed. And we can see that even if there are a lot of cars around during the day, but at some point, we obviously were able to also capture some data without any car. And in that way, the dataset can be cleaned and less of course can be done also in a scalable way. So here we have a situation with both with all objects and here the dynamic ones are removed. Okay, and the goal of her thesis is to identify not only what is static and what is dynamic, but also the process, the type of dynamics the objects have and use this later on for a precise positioning. Okay, we had another PhD student who looked at this data and he did an interesting experiment, namely he tried to provide a photorealistic visualization of point clouds using these datasets. So as I said, we have a lot of data where the van traversed part of Hannover, looking at it using the point clouds, but also having images. And the idea of Tobin was to use conditional gun to learn the correspondence between such a projected point cloud and a real image. And having seen so many of those sets, he is then able to produce a synthesized image from that. And looking at that image, we see, okay, it looks quite realistic. It's not the same as this one, as the middle one, but it looks like a realistic scenario in Hannover. So we see that the cars, we have more or less realistic colors. Also the roofs look like they do in Hannover and probably also in other parts of a build. We see that the color of a building is not perfectly matched, but it has a building color that often occurs. We also can see that this cyan car is not mapped well. Obviously, that color doesn't happen so, so often. Okay, this was one application, but then he also had the idea that it could be used to also synthesize temporal images because he had seen different seasons throughout the year. And in that way, he also added a condition, namely the time in order to predict whether how a scene looks in summer and how it looks in winter. So he injected the time and in this way, he is able to also produce scenes from one point cloud that look like winter or that look like summer. And you see in Hannover, we do not have too much snow, but it's nicely spreads here at the borders of the road and it's nicely covered by that gun. Okay, so let's look at another application where we are looking at other traffic participants, namely cyclists. And here, the idea is to use crowdsourcing data, data of cyclists to capture the roughness of the underground. So yeah, roughness, everybody who rides a bike knows that it's nicer to, to run the bike on a, on a smooth surface and it's not so comfortable to have a rough surface. So therefore, the idea was to come up with a roughness value of all the roads, of all the cycle paths and capture this roughness by the cyclist themselves. So use a VGI approach, a voluntary geographic information approach, where people collect this information themselves. The idea of Oscar and his colleagues is to mount a smartphone app on a spike and measure the, the acceleration and of course, the position. Okay, doing that, of course, we could have one driver driving all, to through the whole city, but that's not the intention. But we want to have several driver and each of those drivers contributes to, to a whole map. In order to do so, we need to of course, drive through all the, the roads that, that there are and measure these accelerations. And they used the medium vertical acceleration as, as unit. And then the question is, how to deal with the fact that obviously the accelerations will differ from driver to driver, but also from, from bicycle to bicycle. So if you have a racing bike, the accelerations will be different than from a comfortable Netherlands bike or Dutch bike, I don't know if they're called international in that way. Okay, so in order to also get rid of this influences, the idea was to set up also again a global optimization where at the same time, this unknown roughness can be estimated, but taking into account these different influences of the bike, the rider, the tire pressure and so on. And the idea is that riders who take the, who cross the same segment of the road, they should produce the same roughness value. So this is a condition and based on that, the adjustment can be done. And the result looks like that. So here in the middle, we see the estimated roughness coded in color. And yeah, there is not a roughness map available, but there is for instance OSM. And in OSM, some roads have a surface type and then they try to kind of correlate the surface type to the estimated roughness. And we see that it nicely correlates, we also see, but we also see that there are some differences like here, we have an asphalt road, which is given in green here. And in the estimated roughness required by the bikes, we see that this value is not as smooth as here. Obviously, the road is kind of degraded and this can be captured by this crowdsourcing idea. What can also be done is we can analyze the temporal degradation. So if after some years, we will have potholes and whatever. And this can also be reflected in, in the data. So we found a dataset, a road segment where we had up to a certain time higher roughness values and that a certain time instance it changed. And such temporal changes indicating reconstruction can also be found automatically. Okay, yeah, what else do we have? Stefan Busch is looking at the creation of high-definition maps also using lidar. So you all know that autonomous cars, they need precise maps and the precision of such maps is also something that takes time and also has to be repeated because the change, the situations often change. And the idea of Stefan is to use lidar data for that. Like here, he had a point cloud acquired at one junction in Hannover. And we see that the cars can nicely be identified in this point cloud. And based on this analysis, the position of the cars can be, yeah, shown on the map. And of course, we are not interested on individual positions, but on the trajectories of these cars and based on the trajectories, there can be an inference on the lanes and the number of lanes and so on. And this is done by using Kalman filter that connects these individual trajectory points and finally also clusters these trajectory pieces to larger areas or to larger road segments. Okay, what his first result looked like that, that he could nicely reproduce the trajectory. So most of them are in a low decimeter range, but there are also some with a higher deviation from it. And most of it, or at least one contribution for that is due to the car model. Perhaps you saw that in the lidar data, the cars are only seen from one side, where the lidar was positioned and the other part of the car was not visible. And therefore, Stefan came up with an active shape model that allowed him to kind of fit a better car shape into this incomplete point cloud. So we have a point cloud only on one part of, of a car, but using the knowledge about the shape of a car allows him to integrate the full car model into it. And oops, and that also then allows him to better estimate the, the middle point of a car that is used later on to produce the trajectories. So here we see that we have a point clouds and the boxes that are put around the point clouds. Okay, and this allowed him then to kind of decrease the, the errors. So the red parts are now decreased. Can you still hear me? Because I get a message that my audio quality is not so good, but I hope you still hear me.
We can hear you very well.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, so using this active shape models, then as I said, reduced the error in the mean error from like 60 cm to, to 36 cm. Okay, let's look at another aspect of dynamic objects in the environment. This is a work of Hao Cheng, who recently submitted or defended his PhD. So he is looking at shared spaces and at how people or vulnerable road users behave in such shared spaces. So this is a scenario that he initially had looked on at, we have spaces where we have different road users all using the same space and they have to share it and find out what is the best modality to prioritize whom. And so the idea is in shared spaces that there is a level of uncertainty so that it's ensured that everybody takes care of the other one. But the question is, what rules underlying here and can we model these rules or can we model the behavior in a sense that we have, that we can observe trajectories and propagate or predict what the next steps in the trajectories would be? So he used deep learning approach for that, conditional variational autoencoder and tried to also meet these challenges that obviously people, they can change their movement very abruptly. They also react to other agents. And this is obviously highly dynamic. And he uses conditional variational autoencoder to not only produce one deterministic prediction, but a series of potential predictions. So this is the model where he included of course, the trajectories, but also some information about the neighboring objects and their velocities and, and positions. And in the end, the result is the prediction of the next timeframes, including also the variation, the possible variation. His results were quite good. So he was on top of his 3net plus plus leaderboard for some time. Let's look at some results on benchmark datasets. So we see here in black are the ground truth trajectories. And after some times, the predictions occur, which are given in cyan. And we can also see that there are multiple predictions that have spanned a fan, where the people can potentially walk. And in red is the most likely prediction. And we see that obviously these trajectories make sense. He also applied it to another dataset, to the interaction dataset by Bock et al. And we also, we can see here that it also produces sensible results. For instance, here we have a situation where a person is crossing the zebra crossing and we have another And we have another person standing or a car waiting for for that person to leave it. So this is correctly predicted. Okay, yeah, um future work he is looking at is to more integrate the scene context. And he is also thinking of um integrating um the well-known social force model. Um so a model-based approach into this black box approach to to get perhaps even better results. Okay, another um application I want to show is work of Alexander Schlichting and Stefan Busch. That did uh yeah some years ago. So the idea is that you have dynamic data, you can create information about. Where are potentially hazardous areas in the environment. Um and hazard means in the case or in this case hazardous for um autonomous driving. So where are um potential areas where where people might pop up and react. Or act in a way that might be hazardous for autonomous car. And uh then they also investigated how autonomous cars and um and people could communicate. So this was um a challenge we participated in and I want to also show you what they did in this context. So the first idea was to create such a hazard map in terms of where are pedestrians. Um typically assembling or where are they in a city? Where they might appear in 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 a kind of dominance that autonomous car has to react to it. And um those pedestrians or also cyclists, they also show up nicely in um LiDAR data. And the nice thing with LiDAR data is that um we have a nice privacy preserving structure. Because people cannot be recognized by that data, so that's a big advantage as opposed to images. Uh so the idea is that um in the future, we would have all the cars being equipped with such sensors. And then we can acquire this information um yeah continuously. So here is the the approach they had, we have um the LiDAR data. We can um interpret these point clouds with respect to the objects we are interested in, namely the the people. Um so to a sequence of um yeah processing algorithms like region growing. And also some learning approach in order to find out what are potential objects. Uh that uh we are interested in. So the big objects can be filtered out and then are the remaining objects like um cars or pedestrians. And other smaller objects and then they are moved by a random forest classifier. And finally, after these objects are left, um we can do this not only with one point cloud. With one measurement run, but with several measurement measurement runs. And um after they are overlaid, um this um we have a collection of these. Uh dynamic objects and they can then be. They can then be shown in such a hazard map. And the idea would be that um in such a hazard map, an autonomous car is also aware that at such positions. It has to take into account that people might all of a sudden step on the road. So it the car should be more alert in those areas. And what could a car do? Um so the the idea was to um to equip a car. Also the possibility to communicate, namely visually communicate. So they installed an LED projector on top of the car. And uh the car would project a green um bounded area. Uh when it is willing to stop for pedestrians. And it would then project also zebra crossing to really allow them to cross. And they they did an experiment where it really worked. So in this case, the car has the ride-sharing mode, so it invites people to step on the road. And once the car detects people, then it stops and projects the zebra crossing in order to to let them pass. So this was, yeah, um as I said, they participated in in the challenge and presented their idea. And I think it's something that um we should keep in 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 our mind. Because if you have autonomous system, there will be a problem of communication between real people and these autonomous car. When they interact and this could be a potential solution. Okay, so my final um example will switch to another phenomenon. Where we have also been exploiting um dynamic information, trajectory information. In this case, we found was looking at precipitation and taking um yeah. Trying to infer precipitation from traffic speed patterns. So um the idea is that of course usually people adapt. Where driving behavior um to the um to the weather situation. If it's raining heavily, people driving slower. And uh the idea was, can we kind of use this as a weather measuring system? Uh so looking at driving behavior and infer what um how the precipitation level is. Or if there is some precipitation. So um of course, this should not replace lever stations. But it was, yeah, it was study in order to find out what could be done with such kind of data. Okay, so he um took realtime traffic speed data from New York City that was publicly available. Um here data from hundred and thirty three roads in quite high interval. And um he um linked this data to weather data from Weber Underground API. And so he had for each point in time, he also had the weather information. And then first he removed the 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 trends. Because obviously the speed also varies um within the week. And so there is this weekly or daily period. And after this trend is removed, um the idea is that the residuals. Um they can be attributed to anomalies and this anomaly could be um for instance precipitation. So then he trained several machine learning approaches in order to find out this binary. Classification, so it's raining or not. And um found out that XGBoost was performing best. And um he had a quite high overall accuracy. And here's an example where we can see how the prediction given in red. And the the real precipitation nicely fits. So what um here the the values, the metrics say can also be nicely seen in the data. So when we have precipitation in blue, it's mostly also found in the predictor predictor. There are some small instances where it's not found. And there's also the other way around that we have predicted precipitation river is nine. But most of all, it has been predicted accurately. And it can also be seen, analysis can be made, which of a hundred and thirty instances was mostly responsible. So what is the highest importance? And there are some streets that obviously have a higher indicator as concerning the the desired classes. Namely precipitation or not, then others. So that might indicate that looking at those streets might give a better or quicker estimation. As to what the weather would be. Okay, good. So this is my, I was my run through our applications in terms of mobility data. Um I hope I could show you that um probably also now already know that mobility data can be captured. By different sensors that we have available today. Uh including also humans as sensors, so the human who moves um also provides a lot of data. Um and they are very relevant for many applications and many processes. Like currently, we are doing, uh we are working together with architects and city planners. Who are interested in finding out where people like to together in cities. Um in order to make cities more attractive, it's it's very good to know why people like to to stop. And to to stay to the John in in a city. And uh for that, we are also trying to use um some of the methods I just presented today. So as I said, there are a lot of applications. Of course, um also methods um that are currently used very widely. AI deep learning, they need a lot of data. And some of our measurement systems, they produce a lot of data, so that's quite beneficial. Um we also have to take into account that some of the data is related to people. So we have these privacy issues that um we have to face in the future. So this is a big challenge. On the one hand, the citizens can contribute a lot with their own data. But um on the other hand, there might be a big reluctance in giving away that data. Because um the privacy might be threatened. And how to ensure that privacy is protected and still the the riches of the data can be explored and exploited. This is something that uh we should also look in the future. So this was my presentation, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really fantastic overview. I I love I love all this large diversity of impressive dynamic data that you've shown and. Um the smart things you do with it. I was wondering, you look at um dynamic effects of the large variety of scales, you know, hourly, daily, weekly or seasons. Um do you do this with um, you know? Already planning to look at certain skills? Or do you have a mechanism to identify skills of relevance dynamically from the data automatically? I mean, if you look at your data, can you see on what scales things are happening? For instance, you showed this this instance where the roughness changed over time, probably due to road wars. I'm I'm picking up some of the questions from the chat here. There were a number of people asking about how do you deal with like construction or things. These all effects on different time scales, so can you detect this automatically somehow? The time scales are relevant.
Um good question. Um no, we we have usually have some assumptions of how the time scales are. And um at least I I did not think of yet of of finding them automatically. But um as for the the roughness values, for instance, on the on the street segments. That can be found automatically because assuming that there is this um this noticeable step. In the distribution of the data, then it can be found automatically. In general, um I think this um this scale dependency in in space and time is is a very good question.
Okay, um maybe I can follow up on the roughness by question by Moritz Stein. Um where the OSM uh was also used as brown truth uh in the training or just as an additional meditation step?
It was not not used at all. It was only used in order to um to map to back to do the map matching. So we matched all the roads to these segments and that was only in the validation to 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 check how. Okay, we do we do not have absolute roughness values. It's a relative value. Also something that we have to do to bring this together either to a surface type. That would perhaps be interesting for for the city administration or to a a roughness value that people can can interpret. Because that's also something that is subjective.
Yes, um you mentioned the different types of bite that gives you different types of users, I guess. Um you mentioned the city administration. Another question by Moritz was, how would you differentiate from temporal degradation of the quality of the road? Uh from from other errors or biases in the in the sensing system?
I didn't get the point. Other errors?
Um that you you have, on one hand, you have temporal degradation where roads just get worse over time. But but you will also have other errors or other skills or biases in your in your entire setup. Or maybe maybe the phones change over time or maybe your process changes over time. Um do you have an easy way of differentiating between true true change that is slow over time? But but actually happening and and changes over time that are actually artifacts?
Um and not yet, because that was just a proof of concept. And that is also something that has to be done and it's also relevant in the context of a project I presented from um. From Julia Schacht-Schneider, that we have to differentiate or to find out what are true changes. And what is just a little variation in in the in the dataset as such. But the idea would be that we can get um this degree of variations that are typical. And to find out what is the the outlier from that. And and that would be an indicator for a true modification of what is typical.
Um Michael Kopp was wondering, um these can generated realistic scenes. Um did you have any way of assessing the outcome other than visual inspection? Did you have any measure for how realistic a scene looks other than looking at it and saying, oh yeah, that's nice? I noticed the green stuff on the greens and on the trees in summer and not in winter. But um do you have any way of actually measuring how how good an image is?
Actually, no, we didn't do it. Uh we all, what we did was a kind of transfer to another city. So we had our data captured. And we went to, we took data from the Kiti dataset from um from Karlsruhe. And that there it also created a realistic dataset. But of course, yeah, we we did it only as you said, we have visual inspection, does it make sense? And in that way, we we checked it and it also made sense in in Karlsruhe. But yeah, the question is how to really do this comparison. If you have a good idea, the the person who asked question has a good idea, that would be welcome.
Yes, good question indeed. Um then uh Christian Eichenberg was also interested about this winter summer um scene uh scene generation. And he's similarly wondering what would be your first experiment um applying this to things like. Generating traffic forecasting movies or looking for hypothetical scenarios like uh jam on roads. Um or changing the speed limit in response to this. Are there any any applications that you might have in mind in terms of experiments? Or and then if you ran them, how would you evaluate them?
Also good question. I think this is just a a idea what could be done. And I I thought that it would be nice to kind of think, hey, if I were now in Florence, how would it look like now? Exactly now, when I'm here sitting in Hannover, how would it look in Florence or how at your place in Zurich? How is it now? Because I know much about the current situation. I would know how the weather is in Zurich. And I would, yeah, I would know the the data. And and then I could presumably get a very realistic scenario. That was would be just a kind of tourist application. But I think what Christoph or Christian was more in in the uh yeah, more reasonable. Um applications like the traffic prediction could also be a good idea. But um yeah, we did not elaborate on that up to now.
Okay. Speaking of prediction, Peter was curious about your rain detection. And uh was wondering how you dealt with the very imbalanced nature of the data. You know, in most places it even even rains a lot or it rains very little. Um so how do you deal with this rather skewed distribution of events?
Yes, um as I said, that was also just a kind of, yeah. To desktop study to find out um if if some signal comes out or not. And it, of course, it it should be um more thoroughly investigated with respect to what has been mentioned. Because you do not have a unique rain over the whole city. The larger it is, the more differentiated it will be. But the idea could be that you could do some kind of clustering beforehand and then feed it into the the network. So that could be a rough idea that you have. And I uh yeah, an idea about neighborhood and um only neighboring roads would have a similar signal. And and then others could be an an attempt.
Okay, yeah, enough um reducing the noise by boring strength by. I I have a last question. I'm sorry, I'm kind of pressing because there's so many questions inspired from your exciting presentation. I'm just trying to keep in time. I'm going to um combine a question by Michael Kopp and Henry Martin here. Um regarding LiDAR and privacy. Um so Mikey was interested in what type of scanning frequency you have here. And Henry was wondering, um how can we be sure that we can really detect people, you know, by LiDAR? It's light after all, um you could create profiles of people that show up again and again, say at the entrance of the house where they live. Um do you have any systematic approaches to?
Oh, David, you just unmuted yourself.
Sorry, something fell on my keyboard. Um, uh, do you have any systematic approaches to testing how much information that's personal you might be leaking or are you not worried because the scanning frequency is so low that that you think that's very long as to that?
Yeah, that would be my answer. We do not scan permanently, but we are getting by for mapping then. Um, yeah, we could do it on one day like ten or twelve times the same same stretch. And then, of course, you could identify if some somebody enters the same building and that might be and you also can estimate the height of a person and so on. So you see that some shape. If I said, um, we do not have problems with privacy and leider, um, that was perhaps not not really true, but uh, at least you cannot differentiate the fiston me fiston me of person. But of course, um, if you look at temporal behavior, um, as from trajectories, you could also derive that and perhaps it's of a similar category, that kind of data.
Thank you so much. Um, we of course still have questions left over. I hope we can go back to those um, before PM wider discussion. I hope you can still stick with us for the wider discussion. Thank you so much again for the presentation. I really enjoyed. Thank you, Monica. So so next up is Yichao Liu from Layer Six C I. Um, he will talk about learning how to transfer knowledge for transfer forecasting by multitask learning. And I'm really looking forward to this presentation because we won first both the first prize in court competition and the second prize in the extended extended challenge. So, um, Yichao, um, the or is yours? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Hello, everyone. My name is Yichao and I'll be talking about my solution to traffic forecast twenty twenty one where I used a multitask learning framework for temp tempo and spatial tempo domain adaptation. So I'm currently a senior machine learning research scientist at Layer Six AI, where I use cutting edge machine learning techniques to solve a variety of applied use cases. In my spare time, I I have also been participating in various machine learning competitions as to benchmark my skill set against the others. So I'll begin with a quick recap of the task in the competition. The traffic forecast competition series hosted by Irate is dedicated to benchmarking existing traffic forecasting systems and advancing the state of the art. Traffic forecast twenty twenty one poses additional challenges for participants. In particular, it seeks to capture the underlying patterns of traffic flows set are both robust and transferable. The robustness of the solutions is benchmarks through the core challenge where the models need to adapt a drastic temporal dimension due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and extended challenge where models need to predict the traffic flow in entirely new cities. The data preparation process that I have used in a competition is similar to the baseline solution open source by Irate. Briefly speaking, the input to the traffic forecasting model consists of a stack of twelve consecutive heatmaps of five minute interval timeframes spanning a total of one hour. I concatenate the twelve heatmap across the channel dimension and additionally concatenate concatenate nine channel static information to input. The concatenated input is then fed into traffic forecasting system which outputs a forty eight channel tensor. Finally, the output split into six heatmaps, each corresponding to predicted traffic states, five, ten, fifteen, thirty, forty five and sixty minutes in the future respectively. I employ UNET as my baseline model due to its demonstrated superior performance in short term traffic forecasting. The unit architecture consists of a contracting pass and the symmetric expanding pass, since yielding a U-shaped structure. The main component of my solution to the challenge is a multitask learning framework. Generally speaking, during training, instead of feeding the model with data from a particular city, I randomly sample data from all the available cities and train the model to jointly predict the future traffic states for different cities. Multitask learning can be regarded as an implicit data augmentation and regularization technique. In addition, the multitask learning framework enforces the model to learn city agnostic representations, which improves data efficiency and reduces overfitting. And later in this talk, I'll present results for additional experiments to just study the reason behind the fact the effectiveness of the multitask learning framework. So all models are trained using the Adam optimizer, the exercise of eight and the learning rate of one minus four. For the core challenge, I employ the unit architecture with four down sampling layers, four up sampling layers and train the model for five epochs. For the extended challenge, I employ the unit architecture with only one down sampling layer, one up sampling layer and train the model for fifty seven steps. As I'll show later, using less parameters and the earliest stopping strategy helped the model prevent overfitting, which results in improved generalization capability when making predictions for entirely new cities. I compared my multitask learning approach against a number of baseline domain adaptation approaches. A more detailed description of the baseline approaches can be found in the archive paper describing my solution. Here is the leaderboard score for each model in a core challenge. We can observe that several domain adaptation approaches such as D A N, D S N and M A M O are able to achieve better temporal domain adaptation performance than the baseline net, which is trained and evaluated each city separately. Meanwhile, the multitask learning approach achieves the best performance, outperforming all the baseline domain adaptation models. In addition, the multitask learning approach is highly efficient in terms of the training time since it only requires training one model for all cities. Here is the final leaderboard result for the core challenge. My final leaderboard result is obtained by an ensemble of unit models trained with multitask learning, where I averaged the prediction from models trained with different rendencies. And it it achieved the first place among all the participating teams. For the extended challenge, here is the leaderboard score for each model. In the extended challenge, the baseline unit is trained using the training data from Bangkok. We observed that our baseline unit is able to outperform the broad rest approach, which was reported to have to achieve state of the art performance in spatial temporal domain adaptation. This suggests that reducing the number of parameters in the unit model together with adopting early stopping strategy can effectively prevent the model from overfitting, which leads to better spatial temporal domain adaptation performance. In addition, several domain adaptation approaches are able to outperform the baseline unit model also by a small margin. The multitask learning approach again achieves the best performance among all the compared methods. It is also highly efficient since it only requires training one model for all cities and does not introduce extra computation costs. Here is the final leaderboard result for the for the extended challenge. The final leaderboard result is again obtained by an ensemble of unit models trained with multitask learning and it achieves the second place among all the participation teams with less than zero point zero five percent relative difference from the first place. In order to gain a better understanding of the reason behind the effectiveness of the multitask learning approach, I conducted further experiments where I used the in COVID twenty twenty data of Bangkok as the local validation set and varied the setup of training data. We can observe that obtaining training data from the same city is more important than collecting more data from different cities. Therefore, the model trained on the Bangkok twenty nineteen data is able to achieve better performance than a model trained with six times more data from other cities. This is not surprising since different cities can have significantly different traffic patterns. In addition, comparing the training data from different cities, the twenty twenty data brings more performance gains than twenty nineteen data since it has a more similar pattern with the validation set. Finally, adding the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty data from one city to the training set is more effective than adding the twenty nineteen or twenty twenty data from three cities despite less amount of training data. This suggests that the multitask learning approach not only works because of the implicit data augmentation, but also because when the training set consists of data from both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, multitask learning encouraged the model to learn to adapt to temporal dimensions during training. I have also conducted the same experiments using the in COVID twenty twenty data from Moscow as the local validation set. While Moscow has the highest means main speed and volume among all training cities, we can still observe a very similar pattern when we vary the setup of training data. So my initial goal when entering this challenge was to find an effective approach to tempo and spatial temporal domain adaptation for traffic forecasting models. Therefore, I spent a lot of time experimenting with a wide range of domain adaptation approaches and did not spend much time in exploring the optimal unit architecture in this challenge. Therefore, we can potentially achieve even better performance by utilizing more sophisticated unit architectures or other state of the art spatial temporal learning models. And in addition, my results were achieved by using the same trained network weights for all cities. Apparently, the optimal performance for each city would not be achieved at the same time and better performance can be achieved if we test the performance on each city in trial and error fashion. I deliberately chose not to fit different models for different cities so as not to exploit the leaderboard. However, in real world scenarios, it is worth experimenting with a per city optimization of the multitask learning approach. And finally, my solution to this to this challenge is based on a purely data-driven approach and I did not perform feature engineering. We can expect a further performance boost if we incorporate a few manually designed features such as the location of the pixel in the heatmap, the time of day for the predicted traffic flows and whether it is a weekend or a holiday. This concludes my talk today. Thanks for listening.
Thank you so much. Very nice. We already have questions from the audience. Um, Mikey Kopp is wondering whether you could give a bit more background regarding the wall time for the training and on what type of hardware you actually train.
You mean the hyperparameters? Said I have.
Oh, regarding regarding the the training runtime. Or how long how long does it actually take to to train train your models and?
Um, I have demonstrated here. So basically for my model, um, the in in the in the core challenge, it takes less than one day to train the multitask learning because it only requires training one model for horses. So.
Okay. And what are you training? What type of hardware?
Um, the hardware is a single RTX A six thousand GPU, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And the, yeah, for the extended challenge, it takes much less time since I'm only fitting the model for less than one hour. Yeah.
Very nice. How did you pick the three cities in two thousand twenty, actually?
Uh, so sorry, what you were asking?
In two two thousand twenty, which of the three, the three cities that you picked for for training? How how did you?
Oh, it's, um, and for Barcelona and Moscow, so.
Okay, why these? Just just random or you have a?
So, um, the results that I have included in the archive papers about Bangkok. So the reason is that I found Bangkok to have, um, to have a medium um, M S E on the validation set. So I presume that this reflects that Bangkok is more like an average city and is more representative of what other cities will be. And I I think later I was asked by the organizer, so why Bangkok and why not Moscow? And and therefore I added additional experiments. And actually, I I observed exactly the same pattern from Bangkok and Moscow.
Sorry, you're sure?
Exactly the same pattern.
Ah, okay.
Between Bangkok and Moscow. So the so the I leaves it this like conclusion codes for all cities.
Yeah, cool. I think that already answers Moritz's question about the different impact of Bangkok and Moscow. So we have one more question by by Pedro. Um, he says he enjoyed your relation studies and wondered whether you have a feeling for a comparison um, between the main city plus three other sand cities, but sub sampled to the same number of observations as using only one city. Have you tried any of these approaches to to disentangle the the impact of total amount of data that you're using and the variance across the cities? Have you have you looked at this at all?
Yes, so in my result table, so the baseline is trained using one city. So that serves as a baseline. So it also demonstrates the superior performance of the multitask learning approach.
And if you now take your multiple cities and sample the data down so that you have an equal amount of data as if you had from a single city, but sourced from three cities, you have equally much data but more variance, um, does that already translate to a win in the model?
Um, I'm not sure. I haven't done this experiment yet. So yeah, I I can try it later or if anyone were interested, you can download the code and so the code is available.
That's the nice thing about the setup. Everyone can thank you so much. Brilliant, brilliant approach. Very nice presentation. So we move, uh, move on in the program to, um, the next speaker, Luca Hermans from the University of Bielefeld, who will introduce a graph based unit model for predicting graphics nonsense.
I I am Luca, um, and me and my colleagues are from the University of Bielefeld. And I'm going to present you a graph based unit model for predicting traffic in the traffic forecast challenge. Uh, so first, a very quick recap on the data representation. We are given the traffic movies consisting of multiple frames of traffic data and the pixels are organized in such a way that we get volume and speed information by this directional. So each of each dimension represents volume or speed in one of the four quadrants. And additionally, we also get a graph which is which consists of the pixels as the nodes and then two adjacent nodes that also that both depict the street are connected by an edge. So we get this incomplete grid like graph. And for, um, graph models, this can be really challenging because this graph has a very high diameter and you can see that this part is zoomed in on this corner of the image and yeah, you can imagine the graph is really, really large and um, when you have long range relationships on highways, for example, then exploring that with a graph models in in itself a challenge already. Uh, yes, here's a an excerpt of a street map. That's the graph plotted on top. And we can see that if we were to throw a visual model at this data, it would also include all these empty areas. And we would expect that later feature maps would um, also be very city specific because the empty areas are very city specific. And thus we apply graph models because we expect to learn more natural patterns of flow along the streets. Uh, yes, so our approach in a nutshell is we take a unit, but instead of applying visual convolutions, we apply graph convolutions. So visual convolutions have shown very good, um, good prediction capacity, but little special generalization or limited special generation capacity, which has been disproven by the by the prior talks already. But anyways, graph networks have proven to generalize well as to unseen cities. And so we take this unit architecture and we replace the visual convolutions by graph layers. And we also develop a kind of custom down sampling and up sampling operations that use the two D position or two pixel grid to 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 realize this for the graph case. So first, the backbone of our architecture is a graph operation proposed by Bataglia et al. And it consists, it uses three feature vectors, edge feature vectors, node feature vectors and feature vector that characterizes a global state of the graph. And it also incorporates three update functions for these feature vectors. So first, we have an edge update. And the edge update first samples descending and receiving node and then incorporates the global state vector and the prior edge feature to update this edge. Using the updated edge features, we can update the node features by summing over all adjacent edges of 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 each node. And this, of course, happens at the same time for every node on the graph. Um, also including this global state vector. And finally, we update the global state vector by summing up over all nodes and over all edges and using a one layer, multi layer perception, a dense layer, basically respectively for all these, um, these updates. And those are different. So we we have three dense layers for this graph operation. So this global state is supposed to aid this gigantic graph a little bit to allow the layers to access more global information than just looking at the very local neighborhood of nodes. And you can imagine that by summing up nodes and edge features, the global state vector could represent something like um, like the daytime, like small values in the morning hours and then larger values in the in the in the rush hour times, for example. So one problem with applying graphs and that's why I mentioned this data. So one problem with applying graphs, and that's why I mentioned this data, this organization of the feature vectors earlier, is that, um, graph neural networks have a fully permutation invariant kernel. So I've zoomed in on this one, um, node neighborhood. Uh, these two things are indistinguishable for standard graph, um, network. Whereas when you apply a visual network, those are very different situations. And, um, you can imagine that when traffic flows from this yellow node toward the blue node or away from the blue node, then this is actually a very different situation. And graph layers in itself cannot really distinguish that. And that's why we think it's problematic for graph models. So that's why we adapt this, um, this graph operation a little bit by first sub-sampling the graph into four directed subgraphs. So this is the original graph. These are the four subgraphs. And then we apply different edge update layers to each of these subgraphs. Um, and then kind of packing them back into this node feature vector in the same way as they were initially represented, um, ordered by these four subgraphs, uh, quadrants, sorry. So here you can see a little bit better what's going on. Uh, this actually reflects the operation that we are applying quite well. So we have for each of the quadrants, a single edge update function to kind of fuse this better topology, topological understanding into the model and actually, um, make a difference on which side of this center node the neighbor actually lies. So after this modification, we get a permutation-sensitive graph implication that could maybe be understood as kind of a hybrid between a convolution and the graph convolution. So visual convolution and the graph convolution. Um, yes, so our focus was on spatial generalization to unseen cities. And therefore, we kind of crafted a custom evaluation set by taking a subset from the training data as a standard evaluation set and then flipping that horizontally and vertically to generate novel spatial situations for the model. And of course, we've we rearranged the feature vectors accordingly because these also contain the directional information that would otherwise be, um, be wrong. Uh, and this is an evaluation. We split it up by city and we split it also up by daytime. So this gives a little bit more detailed analysis. And you can see the blue boxes are the results on the non-flipped evaluation set and the green boxes are the results on the flipped evaluation set. And from this inspection, it looks very similar. Um, but we can also see a very interesting gradient of error for for these cities. Uh, and also what was expected is that at the at the noon times during the day, the traffic is a bit more, so the error is also a little bit larger. Uh, so what we did to kind of inspect why this gradient happens is we very scientifically fired up Google Maps and looked at the topology of the cities and noticed something that is not backed at all by any measures uh, that the lower errors occur often in cities that have a very regular square um, street graph, basically. Um, and then we Berlin and Moscow and Istanbul, which is this one, is kind of more scattered. Um, but we also found another thing that correlates seemingly, um, which is the population density. Um, so it's it's not backed. It's just something that we stumbled upon, basically. And this is a more quantitative evaluation of the models. And also a blatant study where this is a vanilla unit, which is totally untuned. It's just a very basic unit model. Um, and this is our model, proposed model with the subgraphing. And then to test the impact of the subgraphing, we also, um, trained the model without the subgraphic. So this model is, um, permutation invariant with respect to to neighborhood mutations. And this model is permutation-sensitive. And that's just the visual model. And we can see that, um, that our model is definitely very competitive with vanilla unit model. It even achieves a score that's better on average. Um, and it's it's still not perfect though. But we also tested something else, and therefore I have to explain this relative MSE. The the relative MSE is the is the ratio of the MSE of the non-flipped test set. So this is known structure to the model. And then the MSE star, which is the MSE on the flip dataset. So this is novel spatial situation for the model. So the ratio kind of gives a measure on on how much it matters that we flipped the the cities. And there we see that our model is much more resistant to this compared to the vanilla unit model. And then, of course, this model in the middle, which is, um, kind of, yeah, which is least sensitive to topology, I would say, um, is is most robust to this flipping. Um, yes. So here are some qualitative results. Uh, that's basically where you see bottom line is the ground truth and the top line is the prediction of the model at some time steps. And you can see that in the in the early hours, for example, there's a lot of just, um, standard activation going on where there are streets because probably there's very little evidence on on current traffic flow. And, uh, yeah, that's that's basically it. So thanks. And do you have any questions?
Very much, Luca. So we have a few questions from the audience already. So, um, Moritz was wondering this combination of our convolutions and graph convolutions. That sounds like a quite generic approach. And he was wondering whether you, um, look at this primarily in only these data or whether you've tried this with other data sensor challenges as well?
Um, that's basically the first time I tried this. Because looking at this graph, it was, it seemed a bit like an incomplete image, right? So, uh, and also from the recent challenges, we learned that unit models perform really well. And this visual approach is working quite good. So, um, yeah, we tried because we've we've seen the extended challenge is focusing on general, uh, on spatial generalization. So we thought graphs might be better at that. Visual models have a really high general performance. So we kind of find the middle middle way between both. That was the idea.
Very nice. Christian, I think that was wondering whether you could say a bit more about why you picked four subgraphs? Why that seems to work well on a three or five or eight?
Yes. Yeah, this is this is mostly due to that the feature vectors are organized in exactly the same partitioning, right? We use the same quadrants that are also organizing the feature vectors. So that's the reason for that. And also there's a trade-off between complexity of the model because when we use more, when we when we use more subgraphs for each subgraph, we have also a similar layer. So, um, yeah, maybe this this even evens out because we concatenate the 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 results from the individual subgraphs. So, uh, yeah, it it could, we 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 might try that in the future as well.
It was a first approach seemed convenience. It's not principled that it needs to be for from experiments or.
Yeah, unfortunately, no experiments backing that. It's just that the feature vectors are represented like that.
Speaking, speaking of vectors, Michael was wondering the learned context vector. You, did you look at what it, what structure it has? I mean, can can you maybe derive some interesting revealing data from from this context vector?
Um, yes, it was kind of, so we initialized this with some of all the pixels to reflect the general activity in the city. And actually, during training, this was kind of maintained throughout the model. So each layer had its own global state vector. And, um, it was basically when you when when you think about the, um, activity of a street, the sound activity over the time of day. Uh, we had this plot in in the morning where the COVID plot was overall a bit little bit lower than the plot before COVID. So it's actually quite close to that what what the model generates inside this global state.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I hope you can stay around for the general discussion that's for. So thank you, Luca. We're moving, we're moving to the next speaker, Alabu Gisomo from Cali University, who will talk about shifted window transformers and hierarchical architecture for deep traffic prediction.
Welcome, everyone. My name is Alabu Boyeshman. Uh, I will present our paper, Swine Unit 3D. A hierarchical architecture for deep traffic prediction using shifted window transformer. This paper was authored by myself, Alabu Boyeshman, uh, Hazan Almazuki, and Panos Katsis. The outline of this presentation will be as follows. We will start by introducing the motivation behind our approach. Then we'll present the methodology that led us to the result. At the end, we will conclude the presentation with some future works. As for architecture, we introduce Fisher Transformer as a link between transformer architecture and computer vision. Also, shifted, uh, window transformer, which is the basis of our model architecture, will be discussed. In this work, uh, we experiment with a dataset for traffic movie forecasting. Uh, I won't talk much about this since almost everybody has been talking about the dataset. So I'll basically move on to the, um, model that we use for these particular paper. Uh, for the for the paper, we use a 3D, uh, shifted window transformer in a unit structure. Shifter window transformer shares shifting operation with CNN. I would, I would like to look our attention. So, and this is exactly the reason why we are going to choose that. And I will discuss more in the vision between, uh, traffic movements as well as the concept beyond shifted window transformer. Starting with, uh, Fisher Transformer as a simple introduction. Fisher Transformer is basically a kind of architecture that, uh, makes transformer usage possible for computer vision, like segmentation, uh, classification, and the rest of that. A visual transformer basically encourages interrelationship between these special features that normally call patches. Uh, this relationship is, uh, as impact is impactful for is important for traffic prediction. And the traffic situation of a location depends on the traffic history of some other location. And and as also does the transformer as well. Transformer is basically a kind of neural network architecture that have some properties that makes them effective for modeling data with long-range dependencies. Specifically, they have some features, uh, which is a combination of a multi-year attention, uh, residual connection, the anonymization, and multi-layer perceptron. As shown in the figure on the right, I'd rather this figure. Uh, images or input are split into patches, which is then linearly projected after being flattened. This projected, uh, this part I'm reading serve as input to the efficient transformer. However, because when we try to split images into patches, there are going to be some kind of loss over ordering. So to to be able to restore the order, we mostly, we normally add some kind of position embedding to the inputed patches. Why the transformer using visual transformer is similar to those using natural language processing? Uh, the only difference can actually be seen in terms of using, uh, pre-normalization in a visual transformer. Uh, but in a natural language processing, we, uh, we normally use a post-normalization. It is important to mention in at these points that, uh, uh, um, transformers are normally, uh, being categorized in terms of either using a full attention for the multi-year attention or, uh, local attention. So what I mean by full attention is that there is going to be a complete long-range interaction. But for local attention, we are focusing in the in the particular window when we are dealing with the same attention. And this is quite, uh, something that is important when we are dealing with high-resolution images as, uh, is going to actually improve the computational, uh, uh, performance. As an example of a local attention-based transformer, uh, we are introducing, uh, we are going to introduce shifted window transformer. Of course, this is cause, because this is somehow more, uh, linked or more related to the challenge. And, uh, as shown in the figure by, uh, in, I was showing in figure here, uh, this one transformer network follows an architecture, something similar to, uh, CNN. And each stage of the network is more nuanced than the previous stage. This leads to more global interaction at the late stage, something that is also involved in, uh, in, uh, CNN. Also, in the figure in the center, shifting operation of the swing transformer can be seen. Where the windows used for self attentions are shifted between a layer and the next layer. This ensures interaction between the windows. Despite being a kind of a locally-based attention, we are able to, uh, introduce some kind of interaction between the different windows. And, uh, um, the use of window-based attention in this one transformer greatly reduces the computational complexity of the full attention. Also, the shifting operation helps, uh, to ensure entire relationship even while local attention is used. Also, uh, the window-based transformer follows closely with, uh, traffic situation that is location-based. Since traffic flow and quality, uh, traffic, uh, situation of it, uh, since traffic flow and quality of the transition of it, basically, uh, we know that the traffic situation at a different place will have an influence on the situation for a particular place at a later time. Based on the, uh, swing transformer, uh, we have, we represent our model, which is actually based on trying, uh, swing transformer. And, uh, if we look at our model, we introduce the use of swing transformer encoder in both the encoder side and the decoder side of the unit architecture. As you can see, this is a kind of a unit architecture whereby we use shrine-based transformer here and trying to be transform in the decoder as well. As shown in the figure by the right, which is already shown, uh, we mix the features before patch partitioning. That is, uh, before the patch partition, which is the first stage of a transformer-based architecture. We are using mixed fiction, uh, mixed, we are missing the fixture here. And we are also missing the victory before any patch margin in the, uh, in the down layers. Also, the right side of the figure shows the decoding branch where we introduce a feature margin layer for connecting the encoder with the decoder. Normally, when we have a standard unit structure, the encoder and the decoder is, uh, combined by a simple concatenation followed by projection. But in this case, uh, to do that, we incorporate, uh, these two processes as well as a an additional process, which is already residual connection. We basically, uh, we basically do that by combining, very good visual by adding, uh, the decoder input to the output of the concaten, of the projected concatenation. And if you look at our network here, you can see that, uh, there is technically no CNN blocking. Everything has been replaced by, uh, swing transformer encoder, which is shown in the previous slide. Also, if you look at the network as well, we see that, uh, for down something, we are using some form of a patch margin. And when we talk about patch margin, it's more like a kind of a land or a kind of a lens, uh, uh, pooling layer, that is reduced linear layer to length the down samples. The same thing is done in the, uh, in the, uh, in the decoding block. We basically use some kind of patch expanding as well, which is the opposite of our patch margin. And likewise, here, we don't use any kind of, uh, on pooling layer. We basically use this kind of, uh, length on pooling layer in the network. Based on the net, based on the network shown in the previous slide, uh, we showed the result of our, we showed the result on this particular slide. I, for for this work, we trained a single model with data from these core cities. While predicting or while predicting all these cities having a channels, uh, perfume. We augment our data using, uh, flipping and rotation operation. This is important because when we train a network that involves transformers, it's quite a data on, it requires a lot of data for us to train network with, uh, transformers. And to do that and to also prevent, uh, to prevent, uh, over overfitting to some testing, we use. we use these two kinds of uh, augmentation. As shown in, as shown in the top right table, uh, we experiment with embedding dimension, that is the dimension of the first layer of our network and the use of feature mixing block. And that is, uh, do we use feature mixing block or not before the patch partitioning? So, and this experimental, experimentation shows that, uh, the, shows the importance of feature mixing and the embedding dimension. As you can see here, uh, we observed that uh, increasing the dimension has an impact on reducing the call MSC. Also, when we introduce the use of a missed feature, that is, uh, we missed the feature before the patch partitioning, we have a more improved performance. Comparing our model with a model on the, on, on, on the leaderboard, our model performed fourth in the call uh, challenge. And our mobile model is, uh, of course is better than the two provided uh, baseline model. To conclude our model, uh, specifically, we presented the use of a transformer for traffic prediction. Uh, of course, this is the first obvious kind of using that. And we encountered a lot of challenges that we are able to resolve by experimentation. And the model that we presented, uh, resulted in the fourth rank position on leaderboard. Despite being, despite being a kind of model that has not been used, so we don't have anything to rely on in terms of how to tackle uh, this kind of challenges in the model. And for, based on this, uh, we plan to do some more experiments with our model in future. So for instance, we plan to use the static data because we don't use any static data in our specific, this one is a top. And also, we plan to uh, do some kind of modification of the network in terms of hyperparameters to see uh, what works best for this particular kind of data, which is spatial temporal initial. Thank you very much uh, for your audience. All questions will be welcome.
Very much, Alabi. Very, very nice approach. I see in your last slide, you answered Moritz's question about whether you use the static raw data. So that's, that's on the, on the, in the plans for the future. Um, Michael was wondering, uh, with such large data, you know, over a hundred million parameters and all those images, um, how do you, how do you technically do that? Does that all fit in one card? What type of hardware architecture are you applying to train this context?
Uh, uh, thank you for that. In terms of the, um, model parameters, uh, being, since we are using a transformer architecture and most of the building block of transformers involves uh, basically fully connected layer. Uh, it is not surprising that number of parameters could be quite high. However, one thing about them is mostly that uh, it might be, uh, it is quite fast to train if the network is centered in the better way. Uh, also, uh, what happens there is that to tackle overfitting, as I mentioned, we use some augmentation to tackle overfitting. And also, as I mentioned, as part of our official work, we intend to uh, experiment with a more refined network. Obviously, one of the concerns that we are going to tackle in our official work is to work with a more simpler network and uh, which we train more simpler network for the same kind of dataset.
Along those lines, Henry was wondering whether you looked at specific predictions and whether you can maybe comment a little bit on where you see the strengths and the weaknesses of your model.
Oh, if I get the question right, uh, it's about the strength and weakness of the model specifically, right?
Yes, seeing, seeing on the specific results that you get in predictions. Do you see any things that you think your model predicts particularly well? Or where you think that things are hard for your specific model?
Oh, thank you for that. Actually, uh, in terms of the strength of the model, as I mentioned, that we, uh, model is based on this kind of a network that's used, uh, shifted window transformer. Uh, one of the strengths of such kind of architecture is that it's more like a region based. And since a, a traffic prediction is like a kind of a flow prediction because the situation of traffic at a particular region definitely has a, uh, impact on the situation at another region. So using a network that involves this kind of a shifted operation, uh, is a technically, uh, is technically dealing with something that is explainable. So we expect it to have some kind of a, uh, upper hand in doing that. In, in being able to work well with traffic as well as any other kind of data that involves this kind of flow. Also, since we are using locally based transformer, basically based on being a transformer, uh, the interaction between different nodes uh, is well taken care of. Because we are not using, uh, we are not using CNN that is more like just using a filter. We are using transformers. And one good thing about transformers is that it is permutationally invariant and whereby it also deal with a relationship of each of the nodes or each, or each of the input that we send into it. So specifically, uh, looking at this figure by, uh, we could be here. A single patch here could represent a node or a kind of structure, for instance. So if you see what we have in this block of patches, we can see that since all of this is entered into a transformer. So the situation of each of the patches will be related, will be mixed up together by the training.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
I'm sorry, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off. You wanted to say another comment?
Uh, in terms of the, uh, also asked for the, uh, the challenge that this model normally face is basically because of using, because is that, uh, it's, uh, it's quite technical to treat. So, which is one of the reasons why we use a, uh, augmentation. Of course, we are still looking at uh, more better ways to train it to be more, uh, to be faster enough to train. Because it's quite, uh, demanding in terms of the training.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alabi. Um, so we, we're a little behind because of the technical challenges we had. So we're swiftly moving on to the last critical presentation by Jayson Toki from Ultra Data Technologies in Cambridge on dual encoding units for spatial temporal domain shift.
Right, uh, before I get started, I'd just like to thank our hosts for putting together this competition and organizing this special session so that we can find out details about each other's work and how we tackled this problem. Um, it is a shame that we can't all be together in person, um, at NERIPs this year, but fingers crossed the next year we will be able to be in person. Um, so let's get into it. My name is Jay and I'm presenting solution to traffic forecast 2021 with our dual encoding unit for spatial temporal domain shift frame prediction. So before I get into it, I'll just give a little bit of information about us. We're a Cambridge-based startup within the mobility field. And we aim to power mobility and infrastructure across the UK through a data-driven approach. We've got over a hundred years of cumulative industry experience within the sector and over twenty peer-reviewed papers with members on the team having experience from notable institutions and companies. Our dual encoding unit for spatial temporal domain shift frame prediction achieved fairly competitive mean squared error scores in both the core and extended challenge, putting us roughly around sixth and fifth position within both the core and extended challenge. We built one model for each core city that had a very similar architecture. These only utilized twelve convolutional layers equating to roughly less than five thousand parameters, five hundred thousand parameters, sorry. Um, we've introduced a better approach to convolutional LSTM skip connections. And we used a training paradigm that utilized pre-training and fine-tuning. So what will I be talking about today? I'll be going over the task and some data details, data preparation, our model architecture, our training process, how we went about making predictions. Oh, sorry, um, our conclusion and some closing remarks. So what was the task about? The task was a traffic map frame prediction on six cities: Berlin, Chicago, Istanbul, Melbourne, New York and Vienna. There are also four additional training cities, and these were Antwerp, Bangkok, Barcelona and Moscow. The size of these image frames were four nine five by four three six, where each of these pixels represents roughly a hundred meters by a hundred meters. Now, each of these frames represents roughly five minutes. So in a day of data, you'll get two hundred and eighty-eight frames. So the shape of one day of data will be roughly, well, will be two hundred and eighty-eight by four nine five by four three six by eight. So this is time, height, width and channels. So within these channels, uh, channel one is speed going north, northeast. Channel two is volume going northeast. Channels three and four are also speed and volume going northwest. And, uh, as the pattern continues going southeast and southwest for channels five to, five to eight. Now, the main task is predicting speed and volume at these different headings. So when given a data for an hour, can we predict the next hour? But for this year, it's slightly more complicated than that. For the core challenge, we've got a hundred and eighty days of training data in 2019. But the task is to make predictions in 2020 where there is no training data. And for the extended challenge, there's no training data in either of these years. But we have to make predictions on the subsequent hours in both 2019 and 2020. So this becomes a future learning problem. With the additional training cities, there is a hundred and eighty days for each city in both 2019 and 2020. So any model developed would need to utilize information from these cities in order to provide a good and robust set of models. So, onto data preparation. There's two things you need to think about when it comes to data preparation, and that's the sampling strategy and preprocessing. Sampling strategy mainly focuses on the time channel. So we could go with a non-overlapping approach. So if, uh, if this is our data, we, where the red denotes a, uh, our X train and the green denotes our Y label, and then there is no overlapping, so we would then start our next trading sequence immediately after. Or we could go with an overlapping approach where we would have a sliding window. The diagram shows sliding window of one here. Um, which gives us a minimum and maximum of between twelve to two hundred and sixty-five training sequences per day, per city. Or roughly two thousand to forty-eight thousand training sequences per city per day. Now, we opted for a window size of twelve, which roughly yielded around four thousand training sequences. Part of this is because with twelve, it means that every hour within the day is represented within the training samples. We did try smaller window sizes, but it significantly increased training time for a very minimal gain. So we felt that twelve is a, is a good compromise between model performance and training time, allowing for good model iteration. And for preprocessing, simple image processing dividing by two five five. So on to our training and model architecture iteration. Starting with a base model, which was our last year's model, which was a temporal autoencoder with unit style skip connections. The encoder was built using convolutional LSTMs and max pooling for down sampling. And the decoder was also built using convolutional LSTMs with 3D transpose convolutions for up sampling. Now, because for this year, there's quite a difference between the training data and the testing data based on the years that they're in. We wanted to leverage information from the additional cities. And we did this by incorporating pre-training. So this allowed warming up of model weights prior to a fine-tuning stage that focused on a specific target city. So we would pre-train on additional cities and then fine-tune on the target city. Now, there are four approaches here we could take. No pre-training, using just 2019 data, using just 2020 data, or using both 2019 and 2020 data. For the extended challenge, our hypothesis was that pre-training on 2019 and 2020 would be more beneficial because we're making predictions in both 2019 and 2020. And our hypothesis for the core challenge was that pre-training just on 2020 would be more beneficial. However, this proved to be incorrect and performance on the core challenge was actually improved by pre-training on both the 2019 and 2020 data of the additional cities. Now, part of the reasoning for this that we believe is that in the densely populated areas of the city is where most of the temporal shift um, between 2019 and 2020 will be experienced. Where if you look more on outskirts in the more sparsely populated areas, maybe the, the speed and the volumes are more comparable to 2019 in those sparsely populated areas. Um, this is something that has loosely been validated on a couple of random samples on one city. However, we would need to check all of the cities to ensure that this intuition is fully correct. Now, one of the issues with the pre-training followed by fine-tuning is that we may, during the fine-tuning stage, we may be losing some useful city agnostic features from the pre-training. These could be suppressed during the fine-tuning step in favor for more city-specific features. So ensure that we don't have to compromise between city agnostic features and city-specific features. We decided to introduce a second encoder, E phi. And using the same pre-training and fine-tuning methodology, we would pre-train this network using the additional cities, then freeze the encoder, E phi, and then fine-tune only E theta and D theta using the target city. Now, by doing this, the top encoder and decoder, as well as the skip connections, will be able to learn city-specific features on top of the pre-trained weights. And E phi will then be able to have more generalized features that are city agnostic. And we don't have to compromise between, between the two. And by doing this, actually led to improved training and validation loss. The next part of the iteration was trying to reduce the potential for overfitting. So we added a spatial dropout as well as a 3D convolution. Now, the reason we use spatial dropout rather than regular dropout is the spatial dropout has been proven to be more effective at reducing overfitting when image-based data is being used than using regular dropout. And the 3D convolution using a one-by-one kernel allows for control of the number of feature maps and hence the number of predicted frames. And by adding these two extra features, we led, it led to a improved fine-tuning training loss as well as an improved validation loss. So let's just dive into what's in each of these separate modules. So within the encoder, we've got three convolutional LSTM layers with two max pooling layers for the down sampling. We've got the same structure within the second encoder, which we freeze during the fine-tuning stage, but with slightly smaller kernels. And then for the decoder, we've got three convolutional LSTMs with two transposed uh, convolutions for the up sampling. But one thing I haven't talked about is the skip connections. So let's think about unit skip connections by looking at the original unit for a moment. These original skip connections are copy and add or copy and concatenate. First came about looking at image segmentation and allowed for fine-grained image data details to propagate through the network. But we asked ourselves the question, does this make sense for temple data? And does this make sense for convolutional LSTMs? So I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, the equations within a, uh, standard LSTM and then a convolutional LSTM, where the only thing that changes are the inputs, the hidden state and the cell states are now matrices rather than vectors. And we now have convolutions rather than vector multiplication. So what does an addition skip connection look like within a convolutional LSTM? So using our base model to describe this. So within this equation at the bottom, F of D theta is the operations going on within one convolutional LSTM within decoder. And we can see that our inputs are the outputs of the previous layer in the decoder, O I minus one, added with the output of a convolutional LSTM in the encoder, O J. And this is how we would describe an addition skip connection. And this is how we would describe an addition skip connection. Now, one of the two new skip connections that we've described is a temporal concatenation. Where what we do is we still take the output from the convolutional L S T M in the encoder. But instead of adding it to the previous layer in the decoder, we process only that um, output with the convolutional L S T M. And we get a hidden state and a cell state of H I star and C I star. Then we can use those as initial hidden states and initial cell states when processing the previous layer in the decoder. However, this means that all of the convolution L S T M layers within the decoder are then used twice, so it does add to training time. Again, another alternative is a hidden and cell state skip connections. Where instead of passing the output from a convolutional L S T M in the encoder, we pass its hidden state and its cell state to be used as an initial hidden state and an initial cell state within the convolutional L S T M within the decoder. Now, part of the reasoning for this is if we're passing an entire output from a convolutional L S T M to the decoder, we're essentially passing a lot of information from the previous hour when we're trying to do the up sampling that's supposed to represent the following hour. So this may be hampering some of the uh, prediction aspects. Whereas if we're passing the hidden states and the cell states, we're passing what is being learned between each of the frames and the dependencies about how things change between each of the frames, which is more important because those are the things that will be more similar between the previous hour and the next hour. So in terms of results, the, both of these approaches led to significantly improved um, losses than the regular addition. And because the hidden and cell state skip connections was quicker than the sequence skip connection because it only required the convolutional L S T Ms in a decoder to be processed once, we opted for using the hidden and cell state skip connections. So this is our final m- model architecture, which is roughly four hundred and sixty thousand parameters. So in terms of our training process, we used four Tesla V one hundred GPUs with a batch size of four. We use a lamb optimizer with a learning rate of one point five times ten to the minus three. We did try other learning optimizers. Um, Adam was fairly close, but Lamb ended up being the winner, so we went with Lamb. So in terms of how we went about doing the training with, with this model, we pre-trained on all four cities using both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty data for fifteen epochs. Then we freeze one encoder, E phi, the encoder that doesn't have skip connections, and we created four copies. One for each core challenge city. Then each of these copies was then fine-tuned on a different target city for five epochs. Now, we chose five epochs because this seemed to be enough to learn the structure and topology of the target city. When we used more fine-tuning epochs, that actually reduced the model performance. And we think part of this is that by adding more epochs on the target city, because it's twenty nineteen data and we're trying to make predictions in twenty twenty, we end up learning more temporal depend tendencies of the previous year when we're more interested in the structure and topology of the target city. Uh, this, this, this particular artifact was, was found empirically and we found that five epochs was a suitable amount that allowed for uh, the training. Um, and for the extended challenge, the same approach was used, but actually a small model turned out to be better. Um, and this smaller model didn't utilize spatial dropout or three D convolution. So during the iteration of when we added spatial dropout and the convolution three D, this improved performance in the core challenge, but actually didn't improve the performance in the extended challenge. So the extended challenge does not use the, these two things. And the model for each city in the extended challenge is even smaller at only a hundred and twenty thousand parameters. So in terms of making predictions, we use the previous hour to predict the next hour. And there are twelve prediction time bins if we were to keep the same five-minute granularity. But for the purpose of the competition, only six are of interest, so we went with six prediction time bins. A mask was used to smooth the predictions. And there are actually three approaches you could go to create this mask. You could use the training data, you could use the test slots of the training, of the test data, or you could use the high-resolution map. We actually found that the test data proved to be the best approach. Now, part of this could be due to an interesting artifact that we saw last year. And if we look at the mask created using the training data, a lot of the highways have become quite thick. And because each pixel is only supposed to represent a hundred meters, some highways are now, you know, four or five pixels and a highway is not going to be four hundred, five hundred meters wide. So we feel there must be some kind of GPS drift going here. And if we're using a mask created using twenty nineteen data on twenty twenty data, that ended up hampering performance. So using, using the testing data, which was in twenty twenty, as the mask proved to be the best approach. In terms of making predictions for the core challenge, we used one model for each target city and use that target city for making those predictions and then masked the predictions. For the extended challenge, we again had one model for each core challenge target city, and this was the smaller model. And we used all four models to make predictions on both New York and Vienna. And then we took the mean of those four models. And then again, we used a mask. So in conclusion, we've presented a dual encoding unit for space here, temple frame prediction. Used only twelve convolution layers. And in the case of the extended challenge, it's only, it's even smaller, it's only eleven convolution layers. Um, and that's built using nine convolutional L S T Ms, two transpose convolutions and one convolution three D, resulting in the four models within the core challenge, each having four hundred and sixty thousand parameters. And the four models in the extended challenge only having a hundred and twenty thousand parameters. We've also talked about two better approaches to L S T M skip connections than using the addition. And we've also talked about the pre-training and fine-tuning aspects that enabled us to leverage information from the additional training cities to the challenge. Again, achieving competitive results with small models. So just a couple of closing remarks, um. So like I said, we are a Cambridge-based startup, but one thing I wanted to highlight is that within this powering of data-driven infrastructure, the landscape for today, there's lots of large-scale data generation that is essentially siloed and not being used. We, we provide a real-time data hub that allows the hosting and access of this data, which we can then provide machine analytics and enrichment on top of powering this data-driven infrastructure. And the traffic forecast competition, it's roughly in between stage one and stage two with the machine analytics and enrichment that the candidates are providing. But uh, this is where we would come in and we would operationalize these types of models for real-world deployment that can be then used by road operators. And this is why we actually went for a small model uh, for the practicality of this real-world deployment. Um, and then just a few other things that we are interested in is we do a lot of computer vision, looking within mobility at counts, speeds, categories of vehicles, trajectories, lane positions on highways, anomaly detection for stop vehicles and uh, accident detection as well as time series prediction and forecasting. And if you're interested to see how COVID restrictions have impacted London over the last couple of years, please go and have a look at our COVID London dashboard. Um, and if you've got any questions about the our solution to traffic forecast, please check out or please send me an email. Um, and if you've got any questions about us as a company or would like to work with us, please also send us an email at the, the second email listed here. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jay. Very, very nice presentation. Really appreciated it. Um, there's a question already by Michael. Um, asking if you have any intuitive understanding of why the lamb optimizer works better? And whether you think that this was a feature affecting each layer on its own? What other layer-wise optimizers do you think perform well?
So one thing that we noticed is when we actually started model, um, model iteration, we went with a non-overlapping approach with the data. And Adam actually was better with that non-overlapping approach when there was half the amount of data that we were using in the end. When we went with the overlapping window size of twelve, um, Lamb actually ended up improving there. So um, it could be a fact of the amount of data used. Um, but in terms of investigation on what's going on layer-wise, we actually haven't done, but that could be something that's quite interesting to have a look at.
Thank you. Um, Lawrence was wondering regarding your um, analysis of the different mask options. And that has data had a thinner mask, um, and you ordered, what, how did that compare with the static road data?
So uh, yeah, the, the, the static road data, again, it was, it had a better result than using the training data, but the testing data mask actually was better than the, than the high-resolution mask.
Okay, do we know why? Do you have a hunch why?
Not entirely sure why. Um, maybe again, there might need to be more leeway than one, one pixel, because I think on the high-resolution map, when you down sample it to the correct size, um, you do get roughly one pixel representing the highway.
I think it could be an alignment problem.
There could be some form of alignment problem, need to be uh, investigated more or maybe take certain patches and have a look at them in isolation.
I, I have a question actually regarding point that you highlighted yourself that for the transfer learning, spatial dropout and conversions were in helping. Um, can you say a bit more about that? I mean, were they just not helping or were they making things worse? You have an idea of like this like that?
Yeah, I think because the extended challenge, it's quite difficult for, um, because it's essentially a generalized model. Uh, and the, the dropout and the um, the convolution three D is, is there to remove some kind of overfitting. Um, I, I think that for the extended challenge, because there's so few parameters and the, the model weights aren't specific. Um, I'm not entirely sure what's going on there. Um, but it would be something that would, that, that can be investigated further. It's not that it still had good performance, but it wasn't as good as without it. Um, so again, yeah, it would, would need to be investigated slightly further. And it was also interesting that it wasn't just removing those using smaller filter sizes. Um, yielding, you know, uh, more architectures that only had a hundred and twenty thousand parameters actually was, was better on the extended challenge than using the slightly larger model. Uh, I think there, there must be, using the smaller weights, um, allows for more generalization within a because it's looking more in a small local area rather than larger filter sizes, which is looking at more of the dynamics of other connections because it's looking at such a small area.
So, so would you say it's a structural fault? Or a question of the number of parameters? Because you could keep the same structure, right? And just reduce the number of parameters by refusing
Yeah.
dimensionality of each step, right?
Yeah, I think it could be a case of both. Is there were, uh, again, during the model iteration, we did have a look at filter sizes. And the smaller filter sizes did always seem to yield better results within the extended challenge. And I think part of that is, you know, for, for the core challenge, if you have filter sizes of five by five, seven by seven, um, it's large enough where you can get some road connections. Um, that are, you know, fairly large to a degree, but then using smaller filter sizes of mainly three by three. Um, and I guess to a degree five by five as well, you're looking at more localized areas. So it's more looking at more of the dynamics of what could be going on rather than how other networks around it are impacting. So it's learning more.
More local, local rules, right? Well, thank you very much. Um, I really enjoyed the presentation. Um, and thank you again to all the speakers of the session today. We will now come to some wrap-up and um, Lawrence Nine is an icon bagger will then also outline the insights they gained from, from the extended analysis challenge. Special analysis challenge, sorry. All right. Lawrence, Christian, Lawrence yours. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks everybody for all the insightful presentations and all your interpretations. Uh, we would like to, in the end of the time, just directly go into uh, the first question and one of the important questions, and where do the submission performances differ? And what made the competition actually difficult?
So what we did, um, we had another look at those three samples. Um, so what you see here is a heat map of speed standard deviation. The speed standard deviation is computed channel-wise and then the max um, overall, all channels um, of one pixel um, is displayed here. So um, this should give, give some, some intuition where um, high-speed standard deviation um, is on the map. Um, maybe one starting remark as well, we've seen before that the speed level, um, the MSC level for the speed chance is much higher than for the volume um, channel. So that's my, one reason um, why we focus on, on, on the speeds. Um, and we also focus just on the target domain. Um, we, we took the lesson from, from the winner of the core competition and saying, well, let's just look at the target domain and not so much focus on, on the domain shift. So that's maybe some, some starting remarks. So just as a, for a reminder, the three bourbon locations we had before, so we had um, first, um, the outskirts motorway, um, with, um, with some sparsity during the night time and the afternoon peak. We have the main ring road motorway with limited speeds, um, but, but full coverage during the whole day. So um, just one down spike in, in the red line. And we had the center boulevard, um, with quite a bit of noise. Um, not so many, no data points, but, but a lot of variance in, in the volumes and, and also the speeds over the different measurements. So if we have a look at, um, at the stats and, and do a scatter plot of, of all those, um, those directional pixels. So all these virtual, uh, virtual speed detectors we have across the, the city map. So for each grid cell, we have four of them and that's the dots on these scatter plots. So if we do a scatter plot and take the speed mean um, for that virtual detector and the speed standard deviation and plot those, um, we, we get such a characteristic picture. And we, we can see um, where those three locations are and they seem to have, um, so they are all in, in some, some, some bunch of data points. And now we're going to look, to look um, into that into more detail and try to arrive where the competition actually was won and decided. So um, maybe Lawrence, can you go to the next? Thanks you. And so uh, the gray curve here, um, so the, the X axis here um, shows bins of, of speed standard deviation. And the gray line on, on the left um, shows the counts in those bins. So, so many. Um, so what we saw before in the scatter plots, there was a lot around the origin, so that's all in the bins um, on the left. So there are very many of them. And then it goes monotonically down, um, the counts. Um, the, the curve going or the curves, the different colored curves going up are the average MSCs in those bins um, for the speeds, um, of, of the different solutions. So you, you see the full leaderboard here and we see that the curves, they go roughly in parallel and go up with increasing speed standard deviation. So what we also see here are quite characteristically, um, I marked out two plateaus, which we, um, will see on the next slide. Where on the first one on the left-hand side, you see the relative increase in the average MSC ahead above is very, very high. And the right plateau, there you see very, very high average MSC values. And the right plateau, there you see very, very high average MSC values. And if we then multiply the two curves, we get what we have on, on the next, on the next slide here. So we, we have two areas where, where the cumulative MSC in those bins is very, very high. So this gives some in some sense, two critical bands of speed standard deviation where a lot, a lot of MSC of the, of the final MSC average is cumulative. So then the, the curve with those two peaks, that's the one I mentioned before, by multiplying the, the counts with the average MSC and the, the monotonic increasing curve, that's just the cumulative sum of that. So that's the same information both in both sets of curves, just in different ways. So where there are peaks in, in, in the dashed ones, the solid one is very, very steep. And if we go back to the, the scatter plot, then we see that we chose those three locations purely by our interest. So we had a look at the map and thought in Berlin, what would interest us, what could be typical, where there's some, some volume, but we didn't have any theory behind that. And we see that all three are, one is quite close to, to one of those bands and two are band in, in, in the lower band. So if we then visualize all the locations of these, of these, these bounds, these critical bounds, we then see that the lower band covers a lot of the, of the main arc area. So there is not a lot, very high speeds. But, but a lot, a lot of day to, day to night variance and also variance during, during the day. Whereas the higher band, that's where there are very high speeds and during the night time, there are often no data points. So standard deviation goes, goes up a lot. And if we look at the speed MSC heat map, we see that, that probably there are so many of these medium speed of, of the lower band that I sum up a lot. They don't have a lot. And the average MSC there is not very, very high, but because there are so many of them, it, it sums up in the, in the final MSC. And the, the, the higher band, that's just where it's very difficult to make a statistical guess. Because the general speed level is so high and, and often there are no data points. So this analysis can be a first step into explaining whether competition was won or lost.
Thank you, Christian, for all these insights. And let's now get to some guiding questions, which we, which we would like to also in a way answer in that summary. And with that also start, start the discussion with. And so the first one is really on why were the strategies, the same strategy successful in, in, in both competitions. So we have seen that basically in, in the leaderboard, where prominently, and in particular, why were almost city independent ensemble models so successful in the core condition where you could have imagined that, like I said, the specific model needs to, needs to be done.
So in, in previous competitions, models were trained and they arrived on the same city and, and won the competition. And we have anecdotal evidence that training the models in the core competition on one city and then doing the evaluation is less successful. That's what has been done. So. But we think this, this hasn't been explored very systematically, systematically. And naively, I would have expected to see more of training on one city and then fine tuning approaches in, in the core competition.
So I think maybe, maybe one answer there really is that, like, it seems at least that, that one hour of dynamic input data, so basically the, the input input tensor plus the, the static old data seems to provide enough information for, for both, both tasks in a way. And, and adding to that, maybe this is also in a way favored by, by the MSC loss function. In combination, of course, with, with the effects of what we have seen already earlier, of what we also know in a way that the spatial and, and temporal sparsity with those no data values, but also with the effects of the joint volume and speed distribution, basically where the, the speed has, has the, the majority of the, of the MSC in the end. So as a, as a second question, and in a, in a way related to that, and I think we have seen different, different interpretation and different uses also of, of like information about, about the road network. So but it's still the question on what the contribution of the static road information is. I think we have seen a bit like the question on, or the answer that maybe it's a bit like in a sense like a weighted mask, but the degree is unclear.
Maybe one, one additional remark. You found the, and something did not explicitly, explicitly compare training with and without static road information and input. So it's, that's, that's why we think it's, it's in, in most cases, the static information is already in the, in the dynamic, dynamic data and, but in case where there's a lot of, of local sparsity. Then probably one cannot reconstruct the static data from, from the dynamic data. So at least in those cases, static road information is probably essential, but, but we don't know too, 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 too.
And with that respect, as also what just Jay in the last talk mentioned, probably interesting that if the, the mask in a way is is better suited for the, for the type of data in, in a way, this, this also seems to help in addition. So we already started to, to discuss that question number three, which of course is, is the most interesting in terms of, of whether, whether leaderboard and how it came to, came to such a leaderboard. So here I think Christian already started with the explanation. And this differences with the, with the standard deviation, deviation and maybe it's, it's fair to say that as a first interpretation, high sensorized standard deviation, they are rather rare, but they have, they have a major influence. And secondly, as, as Christian was pointing out, with this to the front bands, the big volume and big mass of cells with moderate standard deviation, but still on that, on that plateau, there are the second big bunch of, of cells where, where basically the, the competition was won. So with, with all that and, and these questions, we, we have, and I think this is a, this is a recurring question, the question on, on the metric. Could there be, could there be a better, better metric? And can we find one? And I definitely would say we, we should. We also saw that the masking alone doesn't help to cope with those particularities of, of the data as well as, as of the, of the task. That's definitely a need for it to deal better with, with the sparsity, the metric needs to, to take that into account. As well as with ideally, it would also allow to, to give a better sense, a, a, a better detection and, and resolution of the outlier situations, which again also might be related to this skew in the, in the, in the joint volume and speed distribution in, in the MSC metric.
I, I think from, from what, what you mentioned and, and the analysis of these speed standard deviations is that actually it would be more natural to have some sort of a free flow speed value instead of zero speed in those situations. But, but that's not something we can measure. And that's, that's only maybe an idealized, an idealized concept. So if we would do that, what would be the, it's very unclear what, what would be the resulting metric? If he, if he went that, that way or do corrections on the doubt, on the ground truth data, which is also, then we would again learn what we, what we, what we built into the pre-processing step manually. So, so that's not something very enticing as well. One thing that is clear from the data is that the models did not capture the joint volume, the joint volume speed distribution in the ground truth. So if we plot, I'm trying, but volume against speed, we see, we, we see that there is a tail down going, going at, at the moment where, where, where volume goes to zero. So and if you plot the ground truth data, it's, we haven't that there. So, so there, there is a discontinuity in, in how we, on, on the, in the data, we give as inputs to the models. So one way would be to penalize a distribution shift there. And maybe we could improve models there. Another source is what we see in the precipitation forecast literature, where there are domain-driven measures. But, but probably that's, that would be a combination of many, many metrics and, and, and it would be very unclear how to build that into a loss function. So competition would probably be an extension of what we have today. Where the loss functions somewhat given, we would have also a design of loss function challenge if we went down that road. That's what, what I, what I guess.
Okay. And yeah, I think with, with these, these intermediate questions, also I think the, the, the final question, also the question for this competition and something which we would like to take then to the discussion later is also the question on whether we think that like transfer learning in, in some way has been achieved? And in what sense? And I think very briefly, and we take that into the discussion, one could say that yes, yes, maybe for the general spatial temporal cases, as they are covered now by the MSC metric. But at the same time, also no for the detection and the handling of this more real and more sudden traffic dynamics. And so I think there's, there's still many, many questions and in a way, maybe even more than, than answers, but that's, that's great. Because I think that brings me immediately to an announcement, which we would like to make is we decided to launch another challenge in this static forecast 2021 competition. And this is a bit more an open and interdisciplinary challenge. Exactly looking into answering these, these questions and, and bringing also the ML and the traffic engineering world, world even closer to continue answering such, such questions with focus areas being the analysis and, and interpretability of traffic prediction, something we started today in a way. What, what do the model learn? Whose statistics comparison analysis of predictions? How do they compare? And, and where do they succeed? And how do they deal with outliers and anomalies? The second major topic block would be on the traffic data and the representation of, of, of traffic in, in the data. Understanding the data, understanding these properties as we've seen now with, with the different distributions, dealing with the sparsity and, and as unknown distributions of GPS data. How to represent and, and better use the, the road card information and also how to visualize and, and, and understand actually all these, all these predictions and effects. And finally, like also as a, as a joint and overarching question for, for, for the next steps would be also the question on task formulation and metrics. And even deeper understanding of the loss, loss function from a general MSC to a generic, or generic MSC to a more traffic and maybe physics aware metric and maybe also automatics like, like car based car aware metrics. So this challenge is a like not a quantitative alone challenge where there would be a leaderboard. So we are encouraging submission of, of all kinds of research, quantitative as well as qualitative. The submission would be as, depending on what, what it is, a paper, a data code. And it would aim at also as a submission to, to the interdisciplinary traffic forecast workshop, which we're planning in June 2022. So next summer in Vienna, hopefully with all the participants being, being onsite. The submissions will be peer reviewed by the workshop committee. And we will also keep an index of the submissions published on our website. In terms of data, the traffic movie data, as you know it now from the core and extended challenge will remain for this, for this challenge. In addition, we, we are also publishing or providing the submissions, basically the, the 100 test lot submissions from the different winning solutions to also encourage further analysis of, of, of them. And in terms of prices, as I already mentioned, we are planning the, the workshop next year in Vienna and we would like to invite the accepted papers and the authors of the accepted papers based on the, the reviews with travel cost covers to Vienna. And we also will do a special prize, best paper award within one year, IRE fellowship. The timeline is today is basically our, our kickoff of this new challenge. And the duration, basically the active phase would be until May 31st next year, where we would like to receive the submissions. And then on June 10 would be invitation to the workshop and we are planning the workshop to be taking place in the first week of July next summer. And would be great to, to see many, many people of you there and having great discussions on, on the topic. With that one, just very briefly also providing an outlook. Of course, this was traffic forecast 2021. Hopefully this was the next traffic forecast 2022 or beyond. We have some ideas around maybe more like new tasks or new metrics. Could be what, what we call a completion game where one could think of new data, maybe from satellite or, or other aerial sources coming where you would have a complete state of traffic in, in comparison to the currently where we, we only have basically data from a few vehicles. So that could allow a new, new questions on, could you maybe fill in, fill in the, the, the temporal, temporal stages between these full pictures of traffic? Other, other idea could be around better identifying and detecting of outliers. Different, different metric in the sense that we're not going to, to the same output, but predicting travel times. And of course, the, the overall topic of the MSC metric, we also are looking currently into new data sources. And like satellite or loop counter data. And of course, the analysis and interpretability challenge will also be a great, great way of, of continuing the ideation. And please also feel free to reach out to us with whatever idea you might have. That would be greatly appreciated. And hopefully see you next summer in Vienna. And with that, I think from my side, great, great. Thank you to all the participants, all the speakers today. Really, really great discussion and great talk. Also thank you to our keynote speakers, Monica and Johannes. And I thank you to the scientific committee, which helped us with reviewing the, all the submissions you made, the, the short papers. That was, was very, very helpful and very insightful. And of course, there's also been a, a large group of people behind the whole competition with the organizing committee. With people from IRE and people from Here Technologies putting together the data, getting, getting it all set up and, and keeping it running. From IRE, we also had support on the, on the organizational side and that, that's really appreciated. And finally, I also want to thank Here Technologies for providing us the data to hunt that competition.
After no questions from the audience, then I will be support. Can you tell me a little bit more about the new data that, that you are considering for next year? Because I think that's really exciting, the perspective.
Yes, sure. So I think one, one data source, which is in a way commonly used in, in is in a way commonly used in 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 like city planning, right? It's it's this loop counter, loop counters, which usually a specific location, a couple of hundred usually in most cities and that's just measuring throughout the day, how many cars are passing passing by. The interesting property there is they have basically one hundred percent of the volume at that location. But of course, there's especially base pass. Of course, if this this sparse, sparsely distributed counters could help to also complete the picture, that would be a very cheap source of identifying the total traffic state. So this is definitely something which we would like to explore.
Is there a standardized way of exchanging this information or is this quite a dissimilar process?
This unfortunately is very, very diverse. I think usually most cities have that have that kind of data. Some of them are publishing it on the open data websites, but but usually only in a very much aggregated fashion. It's also interesting to see that that's quite a variety of many even large cities having only like something like two hundred of these stations for the entire area of the city. And other, it seems that this has to do with also with what vendor they using for the traffic lights, they have a couple of thousand of them. So there's also quite a spread of of that. So it's more like something to also investigate, but definitely an interesting source.
Yeah, I want to ask question regarding the dataset. For some of us like myself, it's more like an ongoing research for me. So I would like to know if the leaderboard can be open for us to try our models or we can get the prediction for the test set so that we can continue our research really deep.
That's that's a very, very good question. And yes, indeed, something which we have planned to reopen the current leaderboard so that you can submit again solutions since then. That would be indeed very, very helpful for the for the car model and for the contest set basically. So we will, I think we will take a note and we will also let you know specifically that should should be possible in in the course of the next week to reopen it.
Thank you so much.
Would you be able to also provide the the minimum and maximum for the encoding for the data as well? So like, for example, two five five is the max for the different areas. Could you also provide those as well? Because it would be interesting to have a look at the mean squared error when looking at what the actual raw values are. And then also for targeting a specific area, seeing if some time series models, you know, using Facebook profit are good for looking at specific local areas. Because then we can answer the question of you know, for 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 some local areas, maybe using smaller, more machine learning or statistics based models might end up being better than looking at deep learning models. And it just answers or enables looking at it more as a complete picture as a traffic based problem as well as looking at as a machine learning and deep learning based problem as well.
Definitely happy to look into that. One one question just for me to fully grasp. So if you say like the maximum value two fifty five, you you mean like the maximum of the pre-normalization value in that context?
Like like, for example, within the the encoding, it says, oh, the the speed is from a minimum V to a maximum V, where the maximum V is represented by two five five. It would be interesting if you could also provide what those minimum maximums were for channels, for each of the cities as well. Because then it would be good to look at the mean squared error for the actual target values as well as the pixel values as well. Because they might have a small pixel value MSC, but then looking at the 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 target values, there might be a tolerance within there as well. The specific road operators might operate on a specific tolerance and what would be a good range of predictions.
So that would be a bit also like on the local influence of the city bias, basically, as as.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
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 Okay, that's interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily train the model using those, because I think using pixel values your two five five is definitely the way to go. But then looking at it as a post post prediction analysis as well.
Okay, great, yeah.
Oh. Thank you, everyone. For those of you that are not joining us.